Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Eight to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, February 9th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements. I am very sorry to announce the death of Alderman Ned Lotterback, who was elected in 1976 and served for two terms, eight years, but he served far longer than eight years. He served this community every day. Even when I was first appointed to the city council, I served on the Flood and Pollution Control Board with Alderman Lotterback, and the language was a little difficult for me to understand. And he very sweetly said, "Liz, how are you doing? Do you understand what's going on?" And I said, "Well, I understand about a third of it, and if you just keep going, I'll pick up more." And he said, "Don't worry, it'll take you five years to understand this." I said, "Thanks a lot, Ned." But he called me from the Mather when he moved to the Mather, and he was fomenting some rebellion over there because they didn't compost properly. And so the city sent him composting experts to defend him in his stand, which was, of course, totally right. So he will be deeply missed and served this community far more than eight years. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Several items. First, I'd like to ask Police Chief Richard Eddington to come forward. We're here this evening to share with you the police crime statistics for 2014. Chief Eddington, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Clerk, Alderman, and your honor. I'd like to introduce Commander Joe Dugan. He's been recently assigned as the executive officer. He'll walk you through the presentation tonight, and then we'll both be available for questions at the presentation's conclusion. Thank you.
Good evening, your honor, Alderman, Mr. City Clerk, Mr. City Manager. I'd like to walk you through the crime stats for 2014. This is a side-by-side comparison of the crime stats for 2014 compared to 2013. Overall, crime is up 0.6 percent. As you see on the left-hand side, there is reductions in all of the categories except for theft and motor vehicle theft. The uptick in motor vehicle theft is an emerging pattern and trend that continues into this year, 2015. We are currently actively working to address this issue. One of the things we did notice is that when the cars are recovered, a lot of the vehicle ignition systems are not tampered with, which indicates possibly either there was a spare key in the car, kept in the car, or a valet key, or maybe by use of a jiggle key that sometimes thieves use in order to defeat a lock mechanism. These are crimes against person. Crimes against person include homicide, criminal sexual assault, robbery, aggravated battery, aggravated assault, and arson. These are particularly important to us because it usually involves bodily harm, the threat of bodily harm, or something else directed at an individual. So these crimes are very important to us, and these are down 20.8 percent. This is crimes against property, which is up 2.8 percent. These categories include burglary, which is residential, and commercial burglaries, which are actually down. Theft, which includes shoplifting, theft from a motor vehicle, or theft from a locker, such as in a health club, and motor vehicle thefts. This slide shows the burglaries. Burglaries are currently down 5.1 percent in 2014, from 352 to 334. This is significant when you add it to the crime stats from 2013, where burglaries are down 15 percent. So in the last two years, that's a reduction of over 20 percent in both residential and commercial burglaries. This slide shows the categories which we deploy for on a consistent basis. This is significant for us because these three categories of robbery, aggravated battery, aggravated assault, and burglary are directly related to our deployment crime strategy, where we monitor crime trends and patterns, and then review them and analyze them on a weekly basis in our deployment meetings, which allows us to effectively deploy our resources into the neighborhoods, and these crimes are down 8 percent. It's a traffic crash comparison for the last five years. The blue column indicates all the traffic crashes within the city limits, both private property parking lots, and the red column indicates crashes that are on the public roadways. There was a 5 percent increase in traffic crashes in 2014, which I think this next slide will explain a little bit about. The top chart is from the National Weather Service. The three highlighted months of January, February, and March in 2013, there was 29.1 inches of snow compared to January, February, and March of 2014, there was 65.5 inches of snow, which resulted in 36.4 more inches of snow during that same timeframe. And comparing that to the bottom chart, which is the roadway crashes, in 2014, there was 63 percent more crashes on the roadway during this heavy snowfall. This shows crashes with injuries. The top line represents crashes where one of the occupants of the vehicle reported that they were injured but did not transport it to the hospital, and them are down 14 percent. And the bottom line indicates where an occupant was injured and was transported to a medical facilities, and those are down 21 percent. These are the top 10 crash locations in the city. Ridge and Emerson is still the top location with 27 crashes. We use this data throughout the year in order to deploy our traffic resources to these high accident locations for monitoring and enforcement, in order to try and cut down any amount of accidents at these locations. In 2014, a pedestrian and bicyclist was involved in 138 of the reported 2,604 crashes, which is a 10 percent decrease. These are the citations that were issued. As you can see, we concentrated a lot of our efforts in citations into texting and talking while driving. We do this because distracted driving is a significant contributor to crashes, and we still plan on doing that in the upcoming year, as far as maintaining our efforts in that area. That's my presentation. Thank you very much. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Do we have any information regarding the bicycle automobile accidents as to fault? Do we keep a record of how those accidents happen? What caused them?
We do, Alderman, and we can certainly get you that information. I don't have it available, but as a follow-up from this evening, any questions that come up, we will get the information out to the entire council, and we'll make certain that that is included in our follow-up to this.
Be curious if there's any kind of a pattern, you know, like bicycles going through stop signs, or cars going through red lights, you know, that kind of thing.
We'll get that information to you.
Do we consider it a crash? I don't know what you call it, but automobile accident, if somebody opens a car door and when the car is stopped and the cyclist runs into it? Is that a vehicle?
If it's on the roadway, yes, Alderman.
Parked.
If it's on the roadway versus if the same thing happens in a parking lot, maybe not. On a roadway, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And Chief Eddington, while you're there, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we've been fortunate over the last week or so to receive a very generous donation to the animal shelter, and I'd like to ask Chief Eddington to talk a little bit about that.
Just last week, we concluded an arrangement with Merrick Pet Care Products. Amanda Shofu, the regional manager, and Peter Brace, the VP of Corporate Communications, committed to a long-term relationship between Merrick Pet Care and the Evanston Animal Shelter. They've agreed to supply us with Whole Earth Farms adult dog food for a $10 discount per 30-pound bag, and included in that is free shipping and delivery. Now, this is a huge benefit to our volunteers at the animal shelter because the food is delivered right there at a significant discount. I would also want to mention that Alderman Fisk was instrumental in making the introductions that caused this donation to occur, and I can't say how much time and effort that will save to the volunteers that work so hard to take care of the city's stray animals. So this is a huge event and very welcomed by the volunteers at the animal shelter, Deputy Chief Barnes and Commander Pickett, who currently are responsible for the management of the shelter.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, chief. I think included in that are three free deliveries of food each year. So it's not just a discount, it's free food also throughout the year.
Yes.
Okay.
Did he say that? I didn't catch it. Okay, sorry.
I was mumbling, Alderman.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, and I also want to thank Alderman Fisk, really kind of the unsung hero through this whole arrangement. So Alderman, thank you very much for your assistance with that.
Well, I will say one thing, and that is that the marketing offices of Merrick are here in Evanston, and my approach to them was as a good neighbor. Good neighbor and lover of Evanston animals, and this was the right thing for them to do, and they stepped up. So thank you to them very much.
Next, Marty Lyons, our Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, is here to talk about property taxes and timeframes and assistance that we now provide residents in that area. Mr. Lyons?
Good evening, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green. The city manager introduced me, so I'll just get right to it. The first installment of tax bills are due March 3rd, not March 1st, but March 3rd. And residents who have any questions regarding their tax bill should contact Mitzi Gibbs, our tax assessment reviewer on the first floor, and her number is 847-448-8168. Also of news is that the county extended the application deadline for senior citizen property tax exemption. That has to be done every year. So seniors that are 65 and older need to apply and make sure that they are getting their exemption. Again, residents can contact us at 847-448-8168, and this information is also located on the city's website as well. And as always, any resident could dial 311, and it will also get to Mitzi Gibbs if they have questions. She will respond that way as well.
And I can report, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're getting a steady business. So the transition from the township, people have figured out that this is the place you come and that Mitzi is there, and so I think we're providing very comparable services to what we provided previously with the township. So again, just want to plug it, make sure everyone's aware.
For April 1st for seniors, and March 3rd is the deadline for the tax bill. And we have had some questions. Please note, the first tax bill does not provide any information regarding the breakdown of the property tax bill by taxing body. It actually provides all of the debt information for all taxing bodies, and it is just 55 percent of last year's entire tax bill. So when people look at their tax bill, when they see all the numbers at the top, those numbers at the top have nothing to do with the actual amount on the tax bill. It is an estimate based on 55 percent of last year's tax amount.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Evanda Thomas-Smith, our Director of Health and Human Services, is here. Two big events coming up at the Health Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bob Kowits. Again, I'm Evanda Thomas-Smith, and I just want to share with you some exciting new programming that's coming up. So as you know, the mission of the Evanston Department of Health and Human Services is to protect, preserve, and promote wellness for all people who live, work, and play here. And so in keeping with our own mission, the department is offering, again, for the eighth year, Women Out Walking. This is a 12-week walking program that's provided thousands of people with information and encouragement to live a healthier lifestyle. So our kickoff, again in partnership with ETHS High School, is Saturday, March 21st, at 10:00 a.m. at Evanston Township High School, and quick and easy registration is available online. I will share with you, over the eight years, we do a pre and post survey from the women to really understand the impact of this program throughout the years. And I'm happy to report that many of the participants do give us feedback and responses, and we tailor-make the program every year with their thoughts in mind. But the program continues on the three premises. We incentivize our walkers through weekly challenges. We offer health information and fitness class samples and monthly workshops based on the feedback that we get from the women. So if it's the Year of Zumba, that's what we do. If it's the Year of Jazzercise, that's what we do. And we provide a supportive community environment through teams and monthly group walks. We have had many members of our community step up and become walk leaders, and this just takes on a life of its own. We're excited that this is our eighth year, and I will share with you that all of the way that we can produce this program is through community sponsorship, and it doesn't cost the city of Evanston anything in terms of direct money, because all of the donations and prizes do come from our business community and our community partners, and some of our participants as well. We have opened it up again this year for Evanston and non-Evanston residents, and they participate in giving a nominal fee of $5. This will be the fourth year that we've implemented this fee, and it's never deterred our participants, and we're excited about that. So if you or anyone is interested in participating, you will see our new public health educator, Kristen Price, who is standing next with me, is going to help me be the face of Wow. She's excited about it. She's already had two meetings with our steering committee and received direction from the community on how to proceed. So we're excited, and at this time, I would ask if you would just hold up your Wow t-shirts so the community can see the lovely t-shirts that we're going to give away again. And we love to see these t-shirts around the community. People honk at us when we have these t-shirts out, so I would encourage you to not only sport your t-shirt, wear your t-shirt, be proud that you are a part of the Women Out Walking community. Our charge again is to reach our 1,000 target, and I am convinced that we'll do that again this year, with your help.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good.
And the last announcement I want to share with you is related to our -- I'm sorry. Thank you so much. The last announcement I want to share with you is it's our National Kick Butts Day. The actual national day of the event is March 18th. And I want you to know, in the eyes of billion-dollar industry, young adults are targeted as replacement tobacco users for thousands of Americans who die each year due to tobacco. So the city of Evanston has been recognized with your help as a national leader in fighting tobacco addiction with the passing of Tobacco 21, and we still remain the only Illinois municipality to have passed that cigarette ordinance, but there are more and more communities getting on board. We're happy to say I think Skokie will be next. You've been instrumental in supporting e-cigarette initiatives. So you have been a leader, and we now ask you to help us empower our youth to advocate to tobacco organizations and reduce the harmful health effects of tobacco in our community. We ask that you would stand with us and empower our youth to participate in the National Kick Butts Day. It's a national day of activism that empowers the very young to speak up and take action against tobacco. And over 1,000 events across coast to coast are planned. So to celebrate here in Evanston, we, the Health and Human Services Department, we're hosting take pictures and printed selfie statements to tell tobacco industries that they are not a replacement. So pictures will be uploaded on social media platform, Instagram, and the city's website using the hashtag #NotAReplacement to spread the message. Submissions will be submitted to us February 11th through March 11th, one month, so the department can collaborate with Evanston Skokie School District 65 and Evanston Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition to promote the contest. Now, because you have been so instrumental in leading this charge, we've asked you to participate, to help us ask you to take a stand against tobacco companies and submit these printed pictures and selfie statements to tell the tobacco industry, "I am not a replacement." And at this time, I'm going to ask if you would just allow us, we will put these on social media platform pages, but if you can come down so we can take a selfie of you all with your "I am not a replacement" tags. We want to do a group selfie? And again, we're encouraging all community members, youth, to participate in our submissions beginning February 11th through March 11th. We will collaborate and decide the top five submissions with the most impactful statements. We'll be recognized by the city and assist with continued effort to create a healthier Evanston. Okay, we'll get you another one. So if you know someone is interested, as you gather yourselves for your selfie, please contact us through 311 or www.cityofevanston.org/health/kickbuttsday, or call Kristen herself at 847-866-2965. And again, you can reach us all for all of these events through 311. So I see I am an advocate. I am free-breathing advocate. I'm a grandma. I'm a lifelong nonsmoker. I am 60 years young. I'm a middle-aged woman who will live her life expectancy. I have asthma, and I don't want to smell your smoke. And I am a smoke-free zone. And I am a grandma forever. Got it? Thank you so much. Thank you. And City Manager, that ends my announcements. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, two final items. We continue to encourage residents to participate in the We Love Evanston campaign. This is a part of our designation along with Seattle, Washington, and Cleveland, Ohio, as three finalists for the World Wildlife Fund's National Earth Hour capital. So we would encourage folks, you can vote every day, go to weloveevanston.org. Alderman Grover, at the last council meeting, suggested a way to be reminded, so we now have a text message, so you can sign up for a text message, and every day at 2:00, we will send you a text message to remind you to vote. So if you go to our website, cityofevanston.org, go to e-news and text alerts, you can sign up and get a text alert every day at 2:00 p.m. And then finally, we had a little snowstorm since last we were all together. About 20 inches of snow fell here in Evanston last Sunday, a week ago Sunday. I want to take this opportunity to thank our Public Works Department for their excellent work in plowing. I think what we've heard, we got thousands of phone calls, as you all know, to 311, but I think we were able to get people information, help them understand why the sirens were going off, and clear the snow. Another, I think, real positive from the storm was the work of our Health and Human Services Department, particularly Carl Caneva, with our snow shoveling efforts. We were able to reach out to businesses and residents who had not shoveled their snow after 24 hours through gentle reminders. We were able to accomplish much of that, and I want to thank Carl, Evanda, and their team for the excellent work in doing that. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
None this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. I'm going to call the first four names. Please come up and speak. You each have three minutes, and we are very interested in what you have to say, but if the previous speaker has already said it, you are welcome to say you agree with him. Charles Smith, then Susan Cooney, Doug Muldonald, and Jerry Garrel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm here for the same reason that you guys are all here. I love Evanston, and I want to serve my community. And as you, I take stewardship very seriously. I have been in Evanston for a little over 30 years. During that time, I was a landscape contractor here, built a lot of the parks and playgrounds, planted a lot of trees. I served on the Evanston Environmental Association Board for 11 years. I served on the Lat Arboretum Committee for 12 years, for 15 years, and was chairperson of that committee for 12 years. So I am very familiar with the arboretum, and that's what I want to talk with you about tonight. During that period, we've had many projects that we have funded and managed, and through every effort we have put forth, we have considered accessibility. We have considered what it means to have an arboretum and not just another park in Evanston. We consider it to be a place of solitude, a place for quiet contemplation, bird watching, opportunity to observe animals, and just enjoy nature. During that time, I've been a part of that. We have raised over $1 million of non-Evanston taxpayers' funds that we have spent in the arboretum, including the remodel of the addition to the Ecology Center Building. That was built with over $800,000 and then given over to the city. Throughout the years, hundreds of people, hundreds of people in this community in the last almost 50 years, have committed time and money to the arboretum. And to make a major change in the use and the meaning of the arboretum, to change it from a nature preserve to an arboretum, to simply a transportation route, would be an injustice to all the people that have spent so much time and energy and money over the years. So I urge the City Council to not make any drastic changes in the arboretum and its use without consulting the people like me and a lot of people here with an open process to determine whether we're going to have an arboretum or not. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, and Alderman. I'm here as Susan Cooney of 1834 Wesley. I'm the current president of the Garden Council of Evanston. I'm the media past president of the Garden Clubs of Illinois. Our members have done a lot of what you heard about just now, of working in this arboretum, donating trees, spending our money, spending our time to make this a class, very small, and I have to say it's small. It's so small that an eight-foot path that is now more of a vehicle right away for bicycles and kids doing rollerblading or whatever through the arboretum was not exactly what the arboretum was intended to be, nor was what we put a plan in place to protect. It has been a learning center for children. It's been a nature preserve. It's got -- Twiggs Park has a huge asphalt path through that that would mirror the path they're planning to put right down the middle of the arboretum. Permeable concrete is great. It's better than, I guess, a path of just concrete, but this isn't what this was supposed to be. This is an arboretum that protects a little bit of wildlife in our community. I think it's important. As a member of the Garden Clubs of Illinois, a member of the National Garden Clubs, we work diligently in our communities to protect wildlife for today's generation and future generations. It's just not another park, and I think you ought to decide that that's the direction that this City Council wants to go. There are places for bike paths and boating and other things. It doesn't have to be in the arboretum.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug McDonald. I'm a former curator at the Chicago Botanic Garden. I've been an Evanston resident for over 30 years. One of my primary concerns about the plan is the trees. As you can imagine, trees are the essence of an arboretum. An eight-foot-wide path will need at least two feet on either side of root cutting in order to put it in. That leaves, that makes 12 feet, and I think that's something that the council should think about before they put that in a very narrow arboretum. About 150 yards south of the arboretum, 100 yards in some cases, is an eight-foot-wide asphalt path going in exactly the same direction and going through Twiggs Park. I'm not sure of the logic or the money putting in two of these paths going in exactly the same direction in Evanston. Some people are worried about children and getting to the two schools there, Kingsley and Haven. If children are coming from the south, they're going to come along the sidewalk along Green Bay there, and then they're going to go up McCormick. Well, they're not going to go on the bicycle path. They're going on the sidewalk that's being planned for the edge of McCormick, I believe. Or they're going, they can go up the path in Twiggs Park and come over Bridge Street. There are crossing guards there every day. I've been over there, which is good. And there is also the possibility of putting a school zone in there with speed limits for cars, which would certainly limit any liability questions. The wheelchairs from over the rainbow are another, not a problem, but they need a place to go. Now, they do have twiggs, which is a plowed asphalt path, and as you know, asphalt can be plowed much cleaner than even the pervious concrete. And the asphalt path in twiggs goes directly over to Green Bay Road there, and they could use that. At the very least, I think the council should seriously consider, reconsider, or consider postponing this project for at least a short period of time. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Jerry Garrel. I live at 1607 Dobson Street, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the lat path tonight. Madam Mayor, I also want to thank you for mentioning Ned Lauderbach. He was, my husband and I were friends of Ned's for many years, and I have to wonder what he would have thought about this discussion tonight. A lot of the discussion at the committee level has been focused on what construction materials have the least impact. I am concerned about a much more fundamental issue. Earlier, the city manager recognized that there is a threshold issue involved with this path proposal. It comes down to this: In accepting the transportation grant, is the city deciding to increase the multimodal transportation uses of the arboretum? Or is the city interested in the preservation of the arboretum as a nature preserve? This is the critical decision, and one that will dictate the choices that follow. In the views of what you've heard tonight by other commenters and the decades of investment by Lat Arboretum Committee and other Evanston groups and individual citizens, the arboretum has value. The trees and plants and wildlife have standing and need a voice, and the arboretum's purpose as a destination, not a transportation corridor, must be protected. And yes, uses do change. Maintaining the integrity of natural areas is going to require increasing dedication and vigilance from all of us to address these increasing pressures. But a decision about changing the essential purpose and use of this important, this important and irreversible should be informed by full public involvement, and a well-publicized public meeting before so-called improvements permanently change this vulnerable and precious resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Wendy Pollak, Virginia Beatty, Jim LaRochelle, and Paul Klitsky.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Wendy Pollak. I live at 1410 Oak Avenue. I am active with Evanston Treekeepers, and I was recently appointed to the Lat Arboretum Committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for volunteering.
I want to concur with what's already been said very eloquently. I do think that we're at a turning point, and I think I can speak for my fellow treekeepers as well. We've been among those who've worked in the arboretum. I think people would be sobered to hear that there's serious consideration into transforming the arboretum into what was called a corridor in the committee meeting just before council convened. One other comment, I don't believe anybody's spoken very much about the disabilities issue. I understand that disabled access is an important consideration. In my career working with museums and museum exhibitions, traveling exhibitions, I've been involved with accessibility planning. It is not something that can be done piecemeal. Sometimes you may think that you're doing something to help accessibility. It isn't necessarily so. That needs to be part of a comprehensive public hearing process, and I hope that we can have that now and not go forward with this proposal that's before you in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Virginia Beatty, and I live at 1509 Forest Avenue in Evanston, and I'd like to suggest that anybody that would actually like to look at the proposed plan that was dated February 2nd, 2015, they might call 311 and ask them for the address on the Internet. And in addition to that, people who might like to see a larger copy of the plan, sort of standard sheets, they're available in the Ecology Center during the hours that the Ecology Center is open. I think it would be a really good idea for everybody to take a look at the plan, as well as having a discussion on whether it should be concrete, asphalt, or something else. It's very important to Evanston to have an arboretum. It's a very special sort of facility, and it's been building the community for a long, long time. I recommend that all of you look at the plan and see actually what you're voting for and share your information with others. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, City Managers, City Clerk, Members of the Council. I am Jim LaRochelle. I live at 2104 Grant Street, two short blocks from the arboretum and the Ecology Center, and I've lived there for almost 40 years now, so I know the arboretum quite well. It's very intimately involved with it. I'm also a former member of the Lat Arboretum Committee, having served two terms until this last December. I am currently a board member of the Evanston Environmental Association, which has recently voted to support using the granite composite for the resurfacing of the pathways. That is one of the type of materials that has been mentioned and considered, that is the type of material that is in place near the Ecology Center itself. That was done in stage one a few years back and was proposed for the whole pathway system back in 2007. I also have been a member of the staff at Haven Middle School from 1970 until 1993, and at Nichols Middle School from 1993 to 2001 until I retired. So I know the middle student, middle school students quite well. I'd like to make some points that I have not mentioned earlier before the Public Works Committee, and I would like all of you to hear this. One of them has been about the issue which has been referred to, about the stabilized granite composite. It is ADA compliant, as has already been said before. I think that's important to remember. It is also good for stormwater management and for reduced heat island effect in an urban environment such as Evanston. And it was mentioned in a online article that the pathway resurfacing with cement, or blacktop for that matter, would cover over one acre within the arboretum if those plans went through. I would also like to make mention, because it has been raised, that according to literature I have, stabilized granite is not only ADA compliant, but according to manufacturers, it is plowable, plowable, even though some people in the city have argued otherwise. When plowing snow, it says to use rubber baffle on plow blade or wheels on plow to lift the blade 1/4 inch off the surface. That will probably do as good a job, or maybe even better, than on the permeable concrete surface. That has also been mentioned. I also would like you all to keep in mind, when you are deciding this very important issue, about maintaining the arboretum in a more naturalized state, and that is most of what you have heard from members this evening as a complete body and the Public Works Committee twice. Most people who have bothered to come here have talked against--
Mr. LaRochelle, I do need you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. --have talked against using asphalt or permeable concrete. There have been little or no people here arguing for those, except for some people from the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Klitsky. I'm a resident at 1322 South Boulevard. Madam Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, as well as all of the Aldermen that are here tonight, thank you for hearing us this evening. I am a member of the Evanston Environmental Association, and I would personally have to agree with everything that's been stated here tonight. We should not have paved pathways in an arboretum. Everybody that has spoken here this evening has adamantly opposed to doing any of this paving work. As a business owner, I love paving, you know. I'm in the trade, you know, it's great, but it does not belong in an arboretum. I feel that we could use possibly those funds somewhere else. I, in the business district that I'm in, we're in desperate need of sidewalks there. So, you know, why couldn't we utilize that funding that the IDOT has and utilize it towards something that people have been asking for and wanting and needing? And there's everything that you guys are addressing tonight about safety, about concerns of accessibility. I can't even walk to a neighboring business that's on my street where I can walk just fine through the arboretum. I've seen people in wheelchairs go through the arboretum just fine. So I feel that we should stop this conversation and move on to something else that's going to be more productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pam Johnson, Noreen Edwards Metz, Tom Klitsky, and Barbara James.
Good evening. I'm Pam Johnson. I live at 807 Madison. But first, I just wanted to mention, yes, I'm in the same place as Paul is, and there's high school kids that walk down the middle of the street because there are no sidewalks. So yeah, we would rather see the money there. Kills me, there aren't sidewalks where we are in Evanston, in the industrials. Lots of kids walk home from the high school in the middle of the street, and it's trucks, traffic. It's bad there. Okay, that would be better spent. I agree with that point. I do only have two points to make about the Lat Arboretum. And the first one is, I'm concerned that we kept hearing about this major corridor in the Lat Arboretum, that it was necessary in the committee meeting just prior to this, when we have one in Twiggs Park less than one football field away. I just, I don't understand it. The second thing I'm concerned about is that there was only one public meeting regarding this, and that was announced one day before it was held. And I would respectfully request that we have at least one more so the public is aware of this issue. of this issue. Thanks so much.
Thank you, City Council, Mayor, and staff. One acre of concrete, I did the math, it's almost a mile long by eight feet wide, is an acre of concrete that we're talking about adding to our city, to the planet. Every, most people recognize that paving the planet is not a good thing to do. Concrete is particularly bad, it's a great construction material, but it's bad environmentally. Porous is a good thing, but it's still concrete. It's the same thing, it's concrete without the fines and the sand so that it allows the water to go through. And they have, we know that in Evanston, where we've already put down porous concrete, that it's not holding up very well, it's not very even. Yeah, they're trying to come up with new composition, new materials, but it's still Production of Portland cement, which is the big ingredient in concrete, adds massive quantities of carbon dioxide to the atmosphere. It uses a tremendous amount of energy to produce. And then you've got all these trucks hauling, I mean, there will be a major amount of material removal, many, many truckloads of material coming out, many truckloads going in. Another thing that wasn't discussed was, if we're going to plow this, then that does add to our cost, our annual cost, because it is an incremental cost to add more things to be plowed to the list that they already have a hard time keeping up with. Asphalt is also a problem environmentally. It releases, it contributes to the heat island effect. They use fossil fuel to produce it, releases substantial volatile organic compounds, VOCs, which are carcinogenic, including benzene and tullene. So the other thing is, and there's some confusion, I, along with a couple of other people here, do landscaping, and I do do, I install paving, I have installed asphalt, and I have installed concrete, and I've done granite. And what is existing in the arboretum was limestone. It was installed like 40 years ago. I talked to Mr. D'Agostino about it. It wasn't installed properly, and so they've kind of repaired it over the years, but that's why it gets soft. It wasn't, when a properly installed granite path, you lay six inches, you dig down, you lay six inches of gravel, of compactable gravel, you compact it, and then you just put like an inch of granite on top of the compacted gravel. It remains very, very hard. And so if we used just compacted gravel and granite without the stabilizer, that's another whole thing that I think is kind of confusing to people that don't speak this language all the time. The stabilizer, they add like a polymeric stuff to the...
Noreen, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. So, think Chicago Botanic Garden, all those paths are just granite. They're not even stabilized. Think the Tooleries, think Chauvernee, think Versailles, think Mark Tundum's driveway. It is gravel. And the paths in his backyard, it is gravel. And they plow it, and he's told me that it's not in the springtime, it's not so bad, he cleans it up, and it's no big deal. Anyway, he can maybe share with you. But let's not add an acre of concrete or asphalt to the city of Evanston.
My name is Tom Klitsky, and I concur with everything that's been said here today. Thank you.
Bless you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager, Bob Klitz, City Clerk Green, and the council. I'm here for one, two, two things, one very quick, and then a question. The first one, as long as I'm coming, I'd like to thank, her last name is REHG in the Utilities Committee, who got action from Comcast to solve a six-month-old problem, for which I was, I am eternally grateful. So, thank you to her. The other reason that I'm here is relating to the Harley-Clark Committee. Since the Harley-Clark Citizens Committee is having its first meeting this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM in City Hall, I would like the City Council to clarify for the Evanston residents what the direct charge of this committee will be. My understanding is that it will be to identify a variety of public use options to consider, all of which will keep the building and the land in public ownership. City Council has committed to public ownership, as we all remember, since July of 2013. If the charge to the committee is anything other than this, I would like the council to explain directly what is the exact committee's charges to the Evanston residents tonight during your City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Soon as I find it. Just give me a moment, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, the consent agenda follows. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January 26. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and we request your approval of the following. The payroll through January 25, $2,640,312.33. Bills through February 10 from 2014 are $1,509,705.68. 2015 bills through February 10, $2,185,481.3. We ask your approval for credit card activity ending December 31, 2014, $155,492.73. Approval is requested for the annual Harley-Davidson lease agreements with City Limits Harley-Davidson, Inc., for the Evanston Police Department in the amount of $28,875 for June 1 through May 31, 2016, for seven motorcycles. We ask your approval also for a contract extension for the 2015 crack ceiling contract with Denler, Inc., in the amount of $50,000. Approval is also requested for the 2015 cured-and-place pipelining contract to award, just a second, to Kenny Construction, $267,040, and deny the waiver for LEP and MWEBE goals. We ask your approval also for the estimated annual user charge for 2015 with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for the disposal of sludge up to the amount of $395,000. Approval is requested for the expenditure of public education and government funds to Evanston Skokie District 65 and Evanston Township High School District 202 for the 2014 equipment purchases in the amount of, let's see, $105,751.56. That's the total. Approval is requested for consulting services for recording landmark status on deeds and inventory for 477 landmark buildings with the Lakota Group at a cost of $36,153. The next two items are removed from the consent agenda. That's 4.1, Lad Arboretum Bike Path Project Funding Agreement with IDOT, and the approval of an agreement with Terra Engineering for Construction Engineering Services. The committee chair will address that, those, both of those. Your approval is requested for a CMAC application for Green Bay Road Improvement, Esberry Avenue to McCormick. Funding requests will be up to 80% of the project's construction costs at $1,920,000. 20% of the cost, $480,000, will be the local share and budgeted in 2016. Your approval is requested for Dodge Avenue Bike Lane Project Funding Agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation in the amount, the, let's see, the, let's see, CMAC funds through Chicago Metropolitan Planning Agency, CMAP, constructing the bike lanes, Dodge Avenue Howard to Church. The city's responsible for 20% of the cost, $120,180. And reference was made also to pink bike lanes, but that's not necessary to put in here. Resolution 18R15 is the adoption, of this resolution will authorize the use of motor fuel tanks in the amount of $1,700,000 for street resurfacing. Adoption of Resolution 16R15, this is for action, has to do with the adoption of the State of Illinois standards for transportation network providers. Resolution 12R15, lease terms for the studio space at Noize Cultural Arts Center with Actors Gymnasium and Maria Delapaz-Giattan. Ordinance 2015, 23015 authorizes the agreement for mutual aid box alarm system, otherwise known as MABUS. It is the first addendum to the MABUS master agreement, and this is for the fire department. Ordinance 138014, building and zoning permit inspection fee revisions are in accordance with similarly situated municipalities and are projected to generate approximately additional $97,850 in revenue for the general fund. It's for introduction. Also for introduction, we ask you approve the adoption of 17015, which amends the city code general receptacle requirements by regulating commercial refuse receptacles. Next, Ordinance 15015, decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for Noize Cafe at 828 Noize. Madam Mayor, I also, and council, I also move suspension of the rules. This is for introduction. The committee felt that we should pass this tonight. Ordinance 16015 has to do with Liquor Commissioner recommending introduction and adoption of Ordinance 16015, amending the code to permit the retail sale of alcohol on any given Sunday early in the morning commencing at 11 o'clock. Next is Ordinance 15014, minor changes to the current liquor control regulations to conform with any updates to the Illinois Liquor Control Act. Amendment number two has to do with Ordinance 149014, the restated supply contract between the Northwest Water Commission and city of Evanston that would allow Evanston to feed two chemicals directly into the commission's pipeline. This is for action tonight. Ordinance 10015, amending the city code, the plumbing code, to adopt the Illinois plumbing code in its current form without modification. Ordinance 2015, authorizing the manager to enter into a real estate contract for the sale of city-owned real estate at 629 631 Howard Street to Ward 8 LLC. Two-thirds of the council is required to adopt this ordinance. A19 is Ordinance 14015, amending the city code to allow for the retail sale of alcohol for onsite consumption. This is for action. Under Planning and Development, approval of the 2015 Open Communities Landlord-Tenant Program at a rate of $35,000 for renewal through December 31, 2015. We ask your approval to grant a special use for wholesale goods establishment for Few Spirits at 2308 Main Street in C1 Commercial District. This is for introduction. Resolution 15R15, designating 1823 Church Street, the Gibbs, do we need to take this off? We need to take it off. Okay, I'm going to remove this from the consent agenda because there's been an amendment. P4...
Alderman Rainey, would you remove P4 as well?
I am going to remove P4. It will be addressed by the committee chair. Next item is Ordinance 12015, granting a special use for Type 2 restaurant, Cluckers Charcoal Chicken, at 1936 Maple Avenue in the B1 District. For action tonight. Economic Development. Approval of financial assistance through the facade improvement program for Lucky Platter at 514 Main Street, and the amount not to exceed $10,000. Resolution 9R15, authorizing the city manager to negotiate the modification of the loan agreement with Carrato Cutlery at 1634 Payne Street. This is for action. Next are several, let's see, two resolutions that have to do with ZS, and I'd like those removed from the consent agenda. Resolution 20R15, authorizing the city manager to initiate a request for qualifications and request for proposal process for the repurposing of the city-owned real estate located at 222 Oakton, otherwise known as a recycling center. And members of the council, there's a slight modification, and you have the ordinance in the resolution on your desk, like three lines. So, having said all that, the Madam, Madam Mayor has not introduced any recommendations for committee assignments, therefore I move the consent agenda.
Senator, second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda, seeing no lights for comment. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Eight to nothing, the consent agenda passes.
Alderman Holmes, are you standing in for Alderman Burris?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A 4.1 Resolution R, 4R15, Lad Arboretum Bike Path Project Funding Agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation. Madam Mayor, the committee had a long discussion on the improvements of the path in terms of whether we wanted to use the staff's recommendation or look at other alternatives. After about an hour more discussion, it was decided that this would be moved on to City Council without recommendation. And that would also go for a 4.2. So I would move the resolutions as stand. The council for a discussion.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I would just like a clarification of the time issue, both in terms of construction of some kind of path, and second of all, the use of the current grants that are before us, which are sizable.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, members of the council, staff has gone back and looked at some of the guidelines since the committee met this evening. They feel comfortable that if the council takes action on the 23rd, that that should be sufficient time. There's probably not any leeway to go beyond February 23rd. Is that correct, Director Robinson?
That's good news.
There were several information requests that committee will come back with to the full council.
What about the issue of a meeting for the public? I keep going here with one... I keep hearing there was one meeting. I wasn't involved in any of them, so I don't know.
My good morning.
Your mic, Anne.
I'm really sorry. I wasn't involved in any of the meetings, but the testimony tonight was that there was only one public meeting ever, and so I'm wondering, should we do more?
Uh, Director Robinson is here. I, I believe there was at least one conversation at the Lad Arboretum Committee specifically, and then I think other conversations leading up to that. Is that correct?
Yes, there, there, there were conversations at, I'm, I'm sorry. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bobowitz, Suzette Robinson, Director of Public Works. Yes, there were, there was a couple of meetings with the Lad Arboretum Committee. There was a public meeting, and then there was a meeting with, with, with council, two meetings with council to discuss it. One was the initial meeting that occurred when the grant was applied, when the grant was initially applied for back in 2013.
But I, I think what people are saying is a meeting on this matter for people to speak at will, that kind of, that kind of a meeting, you know, like a hearing type meeting. Yeah, it's different from regular councils. I'm, I'm just asking. I, I'm not taking.
Again, I think there have been meetings of, this is Evanston, Illinois. We can have more meetings if the council would like, but it's really, it's up to the council's direction.
What, what do we think about that, everybody? That was a big complaint.
Alderman Fisk?
Okay. I think a meeting is obviously in order. These are people who are very interested in this topic, who follow it closely, they don't feel that they've been heard. I think it's time for us to make that available to them. I want to thank the professionals that stood up and spoke tonight, because I think it was very helpful. Noreen, if you're still here, there you are, okay, to hear about how, how these paths would be constructed using the, the granite, which I think it certainly was what was in the, the Lad Arboretum Master Plan. And I, I, I went back and I read the master plan, and this is the third or fourth time we've come to discuss various changes to master plans. I know master plans are a vision, but in this case, there doesn't seem to be much reason to deviate from the master plan. And I was very impressed with what one of the speakers was saying, a couple of speakers were saying about it being ADA compliant, and that's important to me. So I would, I would say, let's, let's do a meeting, let's get everybody together, and then let's make a decision.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Grover.
And if we can do it in the next couple of weeks, would be obviously optimal. And I want to direct your attention to the master plan as it, as it addresses this path. And the master plan refers to it specifically as a shared-use path. So in 2007, it was contemplated that this was not going to be exclusive of cyclists or those that were using non-motorized transport. It reads, "The City of Evanston's plan for a citywide bicycle system calls for a path connection through the arboretum." Point I made in committee is that this is a connection, there is a connection along the arboretum path here. It's intended to be a connection, not a thoroughfare, but a connection, and accessibility is key to making this connection. I'll read on. "It is recommended that the main path being proposed through the arboretum be developed as a shared-use path. The term 'shared-use path' is defined as a trailer path that accommodates a variety of non-motorized uses." It goes on to point out that the shared path should be a minimum of eight feet wide, and that was the standard in 2007, that's also the ADA standard, and, and that the path include a two-foot wide area on both sides of this shared-use path to allow users to safely step off the path to facilitate traffic. The path, as it, as it addresses the idea of crushed granite, only says, "It should be constructed using decomposed granite in lieu of the crushed limestone currently in place." So it makes a recommendation for grandstone, for granite in relation to crushed limestone. And again, as I said at committee, my primary interest in, is ensuring accessibility of this path, not just to those months where we don't have snow on the ground and water pooling. My, my ideal for this path is that it be a, a shared-use path, a multi-use path, 12 months out of the year. And it doesn't preclude, it doesn't preclude bird watching, the enjoyment of nature and wildlife in the arboretum. My only concern after that is, how does it affect the aesthetics of this nature preserve? So I'm supportive of improvements to the path, which I think would be compatible with the 2007 plan, as well as what the current use of the plan of the path is. And I'm wary about doing asphalt, very wary about doing asphalt, but I think the path needs improvement, and I think it needs to be usable 12 months out of the year.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that, that there should be some sort of meeting and, and community input opportunity. The thing that I guess struck me tonight, in contrast to my prior perceptions about this, was the idea that there is a possibility that can, that this can change the use, that this can make it feel different than the way it feels now. So, Alderman Grover, you indicated you don't want it to be a thoroughfare, but I think that's one of the things that we have to take into account. Are we, it's a, it's a transit grant, right? The idea here is to create bicycle transit opportunities, so I think the grant purpose is to maybe create a thoroughfare. I'm just not sure. I don't know the answer to that. But it warrants a closer look, so I'm interested in, in getting the additional information.
Uh, I agree that a meeting would be an excellent idea. However, my grandson's first birthday in Florida is even more important than the Lad Arboretum at the moment, but I would very much like to know how handicapped accessible granite is. So if you could check with the folks at Over the Rainbow before the next council meeting, I would appreciate that, Director Robinson. Alderman Wynn.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I watched some of the AMPW meeting before I came over tonight, but I'm not sure whether this was answered before, Director Robinson, but do we know the cost of a crushed granite path? I, I know we've seen the cost of the, the other two options. What would the cost of the, if we could get that, please?
We, we will get that in, in more detail. What I had alluded to earlier was that, that amount is comparable to the permeable concrete, and that was based on the, the individual that installed the, the path at Perkins. But, but we'll do our own cost estimate and get that information back to you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Seeing no further lights, are we holding this until the next meeting?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, let's hold this till the next meeting with the commitment to hold a public meeting between now and a reasonable time before the next meeting, with all the information.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion to hold.
And there's a second?
In committee.
Second.
Would the date certain?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Was that a motion for both of them?
Yes.
I thought it was.
They didn't include it.
I'm sure you said it.
I, I think I said that.
That was good. Alderman Holmes?
Okay, and we're moving on to A13. Alderman Rainey always, already moved suspension of the rules. So I would move ordinance 15015, decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for the Noize Street Cafe doing business as a Noize Street Cafe, because of their closing, due to their closing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 15015. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes.
And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you.
Could you take us through P and D?
Sure. P3 is Resolution 15R15, designating 1823 Church Street, the Gibbs Morris, is it Gibbs or Gibbs?
Gibbs.
I'm sorry. Gibbs Morrison Cultural Center. That was a change, a revision that was made at committee, and that's for action tonight. I move approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Alderman Holmes.
Just wanted to say that the reason why we made an amendment is because we wanted to add, you had received information just on the Morrison part, we did want to add the Thomas Gibbs part because of the importance of the gas station that was run by Mr. Thomas Gibbs at that location.
Thank you. All right. All in favor of Resolution 15R15, designating 1823 Church Street, Evanston, Illinois, the Morrison Gibbs Cultural Center?
Gibbs.
Gibbs Morrison. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Then, P4, Madam Mayor?
Yep.
Is ordinance 13015, granting zoning relief for an open parking space in the front yard at 521 Ridge Avenue. That's for action tonight.
Second.
Second.
I don't, no, someone has to move it. I'm not moving it.
Second.
Okay.
Someone move it?
So didn't you just move it?
No, I did not.
I will move it.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
And then I wanted to address that, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be voting against this.
Go right ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm concerned all the time about creating parking spaces in front yards. I'm especially concerned about creating another curb cut on Ridge Avenue. We saw 60 percent of the problematic intersections, 60 percent of those are on Ridge Avenue. But this is a, an instance where I don't believe there's hardship, where there is access for the garage and unloading off of Elmwood, and I don't think it rises to the, to the level of something that I can support. So I'll, I'll be voting against it.
Uh, thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll on ordinance 13015, granting zoning relief for an open parking space?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn. Seven to one.
Seven to one, the motion passes. Uh, thank you, Alderman Fisk. That concludes your report. And Alderman Holmes, you're in charge of everything. Are you in charge of, I'm sorry.
I keep forgetting that. Okay. Resolution 19-R-15, authorizing the city manager, city manager to negotiate and execute a forgivable loan agreement with ZS Associates. Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I removed this from the consent agenda so I could just address it because I was so opposed to it at the last meeting. Not opposed to ZS, or not opposed to my very favorite tax paying entity, Rotary, getting a fabulous new tenant, but opposed to the issue of Northwestern and the, the exiting fee for leaving the lease early. I've been advised that there are great, there's great progress being made in Northwestern, looking at us in a different way and, and helping us as we move forward. And I am, I am very hopeful that all of those wonderful things are going to happen. And so, in the spirit of that, I am definitely going to support this. And I, you know, it's, it's great to know that we're, we're able to keep this wonderful tenant and to give Rotary, you know, a new tenant and, but also, this tenant, ZS, has got to be thrilled with the incentives that we're providing. I mean, we are a wonderful city to reach out to an organization like this, even though they're going to give us back. We are giving to them, to a great extent, every benefit possible, I think, in terms of economic development that a community could give a tenant. And I've determined that this has absolutely nothing to do with Northwestern, and so I am embracing ZS wholeheartedly, and I wish them all the luck, but I think we're doing a wonderful job in our Economic Development Department to keep this tenant, and that they would be foolish at this point to make a decision to go anyplace else, knowing that they're in a wonderful city like Evanston. So I'm voting, I'm speaking to both of the issues, to the, to the tax issue, the hotel tax issue, and to this.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Call the question.
Oh, there are no, no lights on anyway, so.
Let's just move forward.
Call the question. City Clerk, would you call the roll on Resolution 19R15, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a forgivable loan agreement with ZS Associates?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes?
Um, yes, Madam Mayor. Before that, Alderman, I mean, Mayor Morton, I'm, Mayor Morton. I am tired.
Thank you for the compliment, but.
Mayor, it is, also, it, I, it's my understanding that ZS will also be hiring some of our youth for the summer?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Yes, so, Alderman Rainey, that's another plus for us as well from them. So they'll be hiring some additional youth this summer.
They better hire a boatload.
Well, I mean, not that, that, I'm sure it won't be that many, but I'm just really pleased that we have another business in Evanston that's going to be hiring some of our youth. Resolution 10-R-15, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a hotel motel tax sharing agreement with ZS Associates Incorporated. Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 10R15, and it does involve money, so City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, I think that concludes your, your report.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. So we are at call of the wards. Alderman Wilson?
I just wanted to point out that I will be having a ward meeting on February 25th at 7:00 PM at the McGaw YMCA on Grove.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Um, I was trying to pull my calendar up, Madam Mayor, but I think we don't, I don't think we have another, um, person I, we will have the regular 5th Ward, all, Ward Meeting on the 19th, and there will be a presentation from Shorefront about past, particularly past African-American businesses in the 5th Ward and 2nd Ward area, so it might be something you'd want to hear about. And also, please put on your calendar, February 28th at 3:00 PM for the renaming of the formerly 1823 Church Street building. 3:00 PM.
February 28th?
28th, Saturday. As well as the night before, if you could be at the high school for the African-American Achievement Awards at 7:00 PM.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Tindham?
No report tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind the entire commercial community of the United States of America that we have put out this request for proposals for the recycling center. We're looking for entertainment and dining venues, and we look forward to reading all of their proposals. Second of all, I want to mention that the 8th and 9th Ward had the meeting of the century this past week. Hundreds of people came out, and we're under no false pretense. We know they came to see little beans, but we still got them, and we're able to have a great meeting, and people got lots of information. Finally, and most seriously, I would like from our legal department a step-by-step layperson's guide to banning weapons in multifamily buildings. We had an incident this week that could have been a horrendous disaster by an accidental gunfire, and I don't want that to happen again. So if you could give us the details, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one more thing about Ned Lauderbach. In that horrible, horrible 1970, I'm not sure which year it was, snowstorm, there are Pioneer Press photos from, like, front page of Ned Lauderbach driving a snowplow of some kind on Hinman Avenue, helping to dig. of some kind on Hinman Avenue, helping to dig people out. So just—he was an all-around good guy.
Thank you. He was. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick reminder that this Thursday, February 12, we'll host a 2nd Ward meeting 7:00 PM at the District 65 Building.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to say a few things about Ned Lauderbach. This is the second time in less than two months that we've lost a remarkable Evanstonian and a former 3rd Ward alderman. I knew Ned Lauderbach, and he was really a wonderful person in every respect. He served us in many, many ways, but really, very significantly, as the mayor said, he spearheaded the Long Range Sewer Plan, which was the largest public works project in our history. So every time it rains and your basement doesn't flood, you should think of Ned Lauderbach. Ned had a real joy for life. He plowed streets, he did all kinds of things, and he and his wife, Albi, were really pillars of the community in so many ways. He loved the outdoors, he loved playing cards, he loved singing. I regularly met Ned on his daily three-mile walk along the lakefront, and he did that throughout his 80s. He once told me that his five children were very worried about him walking by himself, but he said, "Oh, if something happens, someone will find me." And that was really his approach. When he was about 80, he built the most extraordinary treehouse in a big tree in his backyard, and then he invited the kids on his block to play in it. My son and Ned's grandson, who lived only a block away, played in that treehouse many, many times. It was absolutely delightful. Ned lived a really full and rich life, and he really epitomized what it means to be a true citizen of Evanston, and he'll be missed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, that concludes citizen comment. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, real estate, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5ILCS 120/2A, C1, C5, C6, and C21.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.